At this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order. We appreciate everyone that's in attendance tonight and everyone that is joining us by way of the Internet. We will have our invocation tonight done by Dick and Pat Snyder from Good Shepherd Catholic Church. And if you all, all please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can get smarter than my piece of paper. There we are. Let us begin as we do all good things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Peace to all who are gathered here. Gracious and merciful Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the many wonderful gifts you've given us. The gift of your love for us, the gift of our faith in you, and of, and of our love for you. We are blessed to live in a wonderful community filled with people from all over the world, from many different cultures and languages, all of them here to seek and live in the freedom that you've granted to us here in this great country, here in this community under the influence of your grace. We live together in peace and harmony, enjoying our different cultures, yet blending together into a single culture that is the miracle we call the United States of America. As this board debates and makes decisions that affects our future, we beg for the grace, Almighty God, that the decisions that are made, that decisions are made in the spirit of cooperation for the good of the entire community. Heavenly Father, we recognize that all legitimate authority comes from you, and you've taught us that civil authority is necessary for the order of society. You've also taught us that all law and civil authority is subordinate and subject to your law. For we are but servants, and the way we serve you is by serving our neighbor. We ask this to our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. Amen. Almighty God bless you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Do I mean the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Mayor Warner?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that item 11 be removed from the agenda tonight.
Okay, I have item 11 to be removed. Is there any other deletions or any more, any other additions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that deletion? Motion to approve. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing four in favor and one opposed. Thank you. At this time, I'll invite Scott Garner, our architect and, and our, I guess, town manager if necessary, to give us an update on our public safety building project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you again. And I have a report. I want to talk to you about three items tonight. The structural steel is about 50% complete. It's up on the police side. The next steel is being delivered this week for the fire side. It'll take about two or three more weeks, and then the steel will be completed, and then we will see more workers on the site. As they can't work underneath the steel. Concrete block are about 90% complete. There's some one-story block on the police side that's yet to be done. They've got to wait till they finish the crane work to work over there. And by the end of the month, brick should be delivered, and so we'll start seeing some of the brick on the exterior of the building. We had a meeting following the owner architect contractor meeting last month to talk about the library sewer options. We do not have a report on that yet. The survey is coming out next week to, to get some more information, and then we will have a report to bring back on that. The building is on schedule, and it's 30 to 35% complete. The next thing I want, need to talk to you about tonight is a request for change order number three. Part of my job is, I'm not out on the site every day, but I'm working on this project almost every day and nearly all day. I review all the products that come in and all the materials that are going into the building. And I look at, doing that, I look at the products and I look at the plans. And during this process, I felt like, looking at, we were looking at the water coolers. I felt like that we needed to make a change in the water coolers, and that we needed to have one downstairs for the police, one upstairs for the police, one downstairs for the fire, and one upstairs for the fire. And so what that means is that we would need to add two new water coolers and relocate one. To do that, we would end up with having one downstairs in the police near the coffee and copy, and that would be so when the policemen come in, they don't have to go into the public lobby to drink water. It's important for them to drink water. We have one upstairs in the snack room for the police, and so that takes care of that. But on the fire side, we need to add one down near the toilets so that when they come back from a fire, they can go in and get water and use the toilet. It's important for them to stay hydrated. We also need one upstairs. I've talked this over with Chief Hotches and Chief Ricardo. They are in agreement with that. So what we would need to do is add two and relocate one. I also talked it over with Kenny Tatum, and he's agreed that this meets the code. What, what we currently have is we've got a water cooler in the downstairs public lobby, and one in the upstairs public lobby, and one in the snack bar, snack room for the police, which means that most of the staff would have to come out into the public lobby to drink water. And, and that's, that's not the preferred thing to do. It was really just an oversight when we were planning it. We should have built these in. And, but we meet the, we currently meet the code, so we don't really have to do anything. But given that this building is going to be here for 50 years, I think it's important that we serve the users well and make it as convenient as we can for both the police and the fire. And it's what you would expect in a building of this type. To do this, the cost is $8,499. Now, there's another side to that. We have some money coming back to us from the contractor, from, primarily from the mason, because when we selected brick, we chose a brick that was a little bit less than the allowance in the specifications. So you get a credit for that, and that will help offset the discost for the, for the water coolers. I might add, the water coolers are high-low handicap water coolers with a bottle on it, so that is, they're what you need in a COVID situation. It's also real convenient. If a firefighter's going to go for a run or whatever, he can take a, a container of water with him, or if they're out working. The same thing with the police. They can take water with them in their cars. And so it's a, it's a good thing. We get, we get, but we do get this money back from the brick allowance. And also there was some windows that weren't in the right place, and we could, we could get a credit for that. We could say, correct it, or we can say, we'll take a credit for it. I would say, let's take a credit for it. The wall is filled up with concrete and steel, and I don't want to have a patched wall. It's a strong wall. I'd like to just leave it the way it is. We can infill an opening if we need to. We get a credit for that. The net result of all this is, we get two additional water coolers, we relocate one, and we end up with a credit of $1,301. So I think that's a pretty good deal. And I would like for us to, I would like to make a motion, I guess I can't make a mo, a motion, but a suggestion that we approve this as a change order tonight, so we can move forward with it and, and keep things going. And of course, this, your choice is not required that we do it, but it's a decision we need to make. Do I have any questions?
Any questions from any board member?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Scott, thank you very much for your presentation. And I want you to know that a lot of people in the community are talking about the structure. That walk by on the track, at least I do. I talk to people all the time that want to do it, that walk out there, and they're just really excited about the structure and the way it's coming along, now that you're putting steel up and blocks. But Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, if no one else has any discussion or questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the water cooler.
Okay, sir.
I'll second it, but Commissioner Legg has a question.
Yes, sir. So the difference in this cost of the water coolers and the credit for the brick stuff is $1,301?
That's correct. And that will be a credit to the town of Hope Mills.
That's all I needed to know. I'm, I'm not a, a big guy when it comes to, to adding stuff in later, but this is in our favor.
Well, we're going to look after the money. We're, we're going to watch the money. It works both ways. If we add work, we have to add money. If we take work away or whatever, you get a credit. So I mean, life goes both ways, and fair is fair. And so we have to be fair in both ways. Change orders are part of the process, and if you work for the state or you work for the city of Charlotte or Greensboro, whatever, they know that you're going to have some changes. And we will have some changes later on in this project. I will work to keep them to a minimum. But I would say also that Lisa Builders has helped us along that line. We've expressed to them that we want to minimize changes, and they have helped very much with that, and helped us try to avoid it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bellflowers to approve change order number three, seconded by Commissioner Edwards.
May I make a comment?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, if I second it, no, but that is to add two and to relocate one, right? It's to add two and relocate one? Is that it?
That's right. Add two and relocate one.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
One other thing I would like to talk to you about tonight, which is also very important. We, we have on this job what we call special inspections. The North Carolina State Building Code, Chapter 17, requires special inspections. What that means is that certain things have to be verified by a third-party independent party, not the contractor, not the architect, not the engineer, but a third party. And we have hired ECS Southeast Limited to do special inspections for this project. They have been doing that, and they inspected the compaction of the earth, they do concrete tests, they do tests on the crowding, they observe these processes, and they make tests as they go along. And I think they have issued 100, I don't know exactly, about 100 reports so far. And then they go, and they follow up, and they do concrete breaks and all that to make sure that the concrete is the proper strength. But I think that, I talked to the structural engineer, and we would like to add to the special inspections the requirement to have roof inspection for standing seam metal roof. This roof is designed for 133 mile-an-hour wind. It will be put on with, it's a, it's a metal roof, and it'll be put on with concealed clips. A roof like this has different zones, root wind zones on it. Down at the edge, the clips have to be closer together. At the corners, they have to be closer together. There, there are different spaces all over the roof between the clips. So somebody needs to, in my opinion, somebody needs to be there to measure these clips and make sure they are put on properly. I can't be here all the time to do it, and I'm, I'm not too comfortable climbing on a roof that tall anymore. But it's important to do that. ECS has a man who is a certified roof inspector. He would come out when he's called and make inspections, he'll write reports, and he will issue reports, and he will make sure that the clips are put on properly. And of course, there's, there's money to go along with that. Also, we need, I think that there have been more inspections for the concrete and the ground than anticipated, so we need a little bit more money for that. All total, we need to increase the fee for special inspections by $26,000. And I know that sounds like a lot of money, but this is money well spent to make sure the building is built properly. And we need to do that. This does not go through the contractor, and if we are billed by the hour, we see the reports, we see the time, and the town pays the bills. This is, this is in the budget for the building, but we just need to allocate a little bit more for special inspection testing. And I would suggest that we do that. Do I have any questions?
What was the total fee for that again?
$26,000.
This was an addition too, right? This is an additional $26,000.
It's an additional $26,000.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at, Scott, I'm looking at the spreadsheet under, it's ECS, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm looking at which one of these line items is going to be increased. I don't believe it's the subsurface. Is it the second one, the construction material testing?
That would be part of it.
Is that where the 26 will go?
Well, is there a line on there named special?
I see the last one, special inspections, looks like SD.
It's, it's the same firm doing both the material testing and the special inspections, and it would go on one of those lines. It would go on the special inspections line.
Okay. Because each of them have $20,859 budget. And we're going to increase one of these by 26,000.
26,000. And we, I don't think, I don't think that we will use all of that. But I would prefer to ask for a little bit extra money. They will bill hourly against that. That way I won't have to come back and ask you again to increase it. And so I think this will see us through the end of the job. That's what I'm anticipating.
Okay. So, no, Drew's not here. My, my, my further question is, would this, would this come out of the contingency or would this?
Probably.
It's going to come out of the contingency, right, Scott?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that's where it's going to come from. Because we haven't used any contingency money to date.
Well, we used a little bit, a very small, we used a small amount on change order one when we approved change order for the trees.
The trees, yeah, okay.
And my, my amount, I think that's about $6,000, if I remember correctly. No, I'm sorry, $8,625 was change order one. But, I mean, to give you some vision, the state, when you do a project for the state, for new construction, they say to allow 5% of your construction cost for contingency. Now, my hope is we're not going to get anywhere near that. But we will use some of it as we go through, through this. But we haven't used very much so far. We, we used the 8,000, but we also have a credit of $245 from change order two.
Yeah.
And we get a credit of 1301 from this one. So, I mean, we really have not used much of the cha, of contentious, contingency to date.
Well, Scott, it's not that I'm opposed to it. I just want to make sure where the funding's coming from. That's the main thing. I want to make sure that it's coming from the right place.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, change order one, two, and three was coming out, three now coming out of contingency, and this is not going to be a change order. It's just going to be an addition.
This is not a ch-
Yeah.
ECS is not a change order. This merely the funding for appropriation of funding within your total construction budget. And I guess you'll have to defer to Drew or somebody to tell you where this is coming from.
Well, with the costs of this project, $26,000 to ensure that that roof is on there for the amount of years that that structure's going to be out there, I think it's well worth the investment. Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion to increase the inspection budget by $26,000. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I think we've got a nice building going. I think it's going to be very exciting. And I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks, Scott.
Next on our agenda, I have a special proclamation to read, and this is designation of July as Park and Rec, Park and Recreation Month. We do have our Parks and Rec Director here this evening, Lamarcus Morrison, and I just want to thank him as we celebrate this month, that, for all that he does for the Town of Hope Mills and leading our department. And it states, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Hope Mills. Whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the total tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and provide vegetative buffers to the development and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation. Therefore, be it resolved by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the Town of Hope Mills." And I would also like to say that, and I did bring a picture of this tonight, but we have in our budget, in our capital, it's really our capital impro, our capital improvement plan. This is what we go through during our budget retreat, and it's the final thing that we have in place. But I do want you to know that Representative Zoka and Senator Kirk Devier got in touch with me and asked if we could, if there was a chance of adding something to their budget in order to help improve the quality of life in Hope Mills. And we agreed that the two things right now that we can afford that potentially was a lesser amount, one would be our all-inclusive playground, and the other would be the splash pad. Both we have designs for in our budget, but we don't have the $340,000 to complete either of those, which both of them are estimated to cost that amount. So what I'm hoping is that this will be something that the state will see to fund for Hope Mills. And if they do, then we can thank Senator Devier and Representative Zoka for pushing this through for the Town of Hope Mills. So again, good news for Parks and Rec for this month. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Legg if he'll join me on the floor. We have some special certificates to present.
Many of you know that we're, we're a baseball town. By all means, everybody considers Hope Mills baseball. We're also softball. And our softball teams and baseball teams have done very well. And we hosted the Dixie Tournament here. The good thing about it is Commissioner Legg headed that project up along with Parks and Rec. And so we've got some special certificates tonight presented by Commissioner Legg to the members that were there that participated and helped us make this a successful tournament. First, in a ring of appreciation, presented to, in recognition of your assistance in the Dixie Youth Baseball and Softball Tournaments. And first, we have Maxie Duff.
Thank you, Lamarcus. Mr. Morrison and Mr. Kissinger, could you come up, please?
Our next certificate is for Stephen Kissinger. Next certificate, Keith Bryant.
I'm working with him.
Okay. Kim Smart.
Madam Mayor?
Okay.
I didn't invite a bunch of these people here because I do know how many people we can have in this room. So I didn't want to have the bar chief send us out, outside somewhere. Sorry, go ahead.
Linda Bowie, Julian Ogden, Glenda Lambert, Errol Daniels, Ryan Freeman, Kelly Reed, Terry Ross, Tanny Jordan, Billy Sue Perry, Christine Masewag, Ryan McDonald, and Lisa McDonald. And I think Commissioner Legg wants to turn it over to-
I would like to ask Stephen and Maxie to give you an update of where we're at, what can we have going to the World Series. I know we had a very successful district tournaments with, Stephen, you take it over. Stephen's an assistant district director.
Yeah, same district director for softball for our district, and we did host the district tournament here in Hope Mills. We had a total of 20 teams, and all four of the Hope Mills teams participated, and all four of the Hope Mills teams won the championship. So we did a clean championship. (applause) The loser game went on and played in the state tournament. In the state tournament, three out of those four teams played in championship games, won-one, and, and the 12 U ponytails were played in the World Series in Louisiana. So we did in, and so, but we had three of the four playing championship game, and one of them is going to play in the World Series and continue on. So it was amazing. We, we did really good. We profited very well in the tournament. Now they're talking about wanting to do state and World Series in Hope Mills. That should be the future.
Yep, yes. Yes, yes.
Very well. I want to thank Mr. Morrison for allowing us to have it here for one, and Maxie being out there beside me the whole time, the whole night, tonight getting home at 12:00 PM, and it was, but it was worth it. Jerry coming out, the mayor coming out, Scott coming out, everybody came out. Thank you for all of the support through everything. I appreciate it. Maxie, can you talk about the baseball?
So, Hope Mills Youth Association hosted the 8U Tournament weekend of June 25th, 26th. Hope Mills American knocked off Hope Mills National to win the district and advance to the state tournament in Parkville. 10U, we had two teams play in the district in Wellington. Our Hope Mills American side won the district, finished runner-up in the state last Friday, won the championship game to push it to an if game, and unfortunately came up short in that game. 12 U is currently playing right now in Eden, North Carolina. They are 1-1. They have a bye today. They play at 4 o'clock tomorrow against the loser of West Chatham County in Humberton. 14 U, our Dixie Boys baseball team, won the state championship last Wednesday. They advanced to West Monroe, Louisiana. They lead this week. Really quick turnaround. I think they're going to do really well. They, they finished undefeated in the state tournament as well in Oshkosh. And again, our 12 U is the only one playing right now. So once they complete, could possibly have a third one. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Maxie. Yeah, Lamarcus, thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
And for giving these guys the reins to, to bring more baseball knowledge people into Hope Mills. And hopefully we can have bigger, better things in the future with the development of the golf course and the possible building of a wagon wheel stadium out there, where we can bring in some money off of these kids. I know that might sound bad. When you host a World Series or a state tournament, there's a lot of, a lot of things that add up to there. There's- There's gate fees, there's hotels, gasoline, food, restaurants, shopping. So the economical impact that it could possibly give Hope Mills just for the state and World Series tournaments and more district tournaments would be something big for Hope Mills. I mean, it'd be self-supporting almost for the park program. And another, another note on that. The rental that people pay to have a travel team tournament, the town could get ten to fifteen thousand dollars a week. Did that, did you about the right figure? On gate fees alone, and all we have to do is pull a guy out there to pick up trash. They collect the gate fees, put a guy out there with the radio, and he tells, and let's turn them loose. So if you guys see this pop up on the ballot or something, I appreciate if you supported the kids of Hope Mills. Because all of them's got Hope Mills across their chest. They didn't say what age they are or what division they're in. Only they know that, and these guys know that. But they all say Hope Mills. So they're representing you and me and these gentlemen standing here. So thank you, guys, for a job well done.
Thank you.
And on another note, and the most important note, is the coaches that work so diligently and the parents. Many of you may have seen on Saturday, a lot of fundraising that did car wash. There's a lot of things happening right now. If, if a youth or a child, one of these kids asks you to help them, they've got to, they're putting the bill to go to Louisiana. And so the parents really have stepped up to the plate. They've done a lot of things just within a weekend's time. But keep in mind, one of these teams is leaving, what, tomorrow, the next day?
Thursday morning, five A.M.
Yeah. So what's happening is they're trying to raise a bunch of money. So if they do, if you have a neighbor or a child or somebody asks you, it's for a good cause, and it's also an opportunity for them. It's unbelievable, the exposure that they'll get. But we're very proud of what you guys have done, and we're very proud of our youth association. But most importantly, our youth and our parents and our coaches, they represent Hope Mills well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Before we move on to the next topic, I'd like to ask my fellow board members to consider supporting these ball teams that are going to the World Series. As Commissioner Legg said, these ball teams, they represent us, our community. And when they go to the World Series, they serve as ambassadors for our town. And it costs a lot of money to go to the World Series. I don't know about their league. I know about mine. I went to the World Series a long time ago. It's a little something you may not know about me, when I was playing softball. And I'd like to, I'd like to see us get behind and support our ball teams. And I will make a motion that we, that we can, that we would pay a thousand dollars per team to go to the World Series as ambassadors of Hope Mills. I'll ask my fellow board members to consider that.
I'll second that motion. We don't know how many teams yet, so... But the max would be four, I believe. Is that correct?
Two, three, three max.
Three max, okay. That's only three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? And I will tell you that I know that online, especially on social media, they do have a donation page because I've donated there to two of the teams, and that's something that you can do if you want to individually. And this is for people that are listening to us online, is the community can go there and make a donation and, and help the teams also. But we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Can I clarify the motion? Is it a motion for the town to donate the money or for the commissioner to officially do it?
Town to donate the money.
And the only thing is, I guess Drew not being here, we'll just have to let town manager carry the message. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. And congratulations, and we wish them well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Next, we... Next, we have pres-, next, we have the update by Samantha from Veterans Suicide Awareness Prevention regarding the swim event scheduled for August the seventh. Samantha Lubin.
Good evening, everyone. My approach with updated flyers and everything for the board members, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, board members. As you can see, it's coming around, coming along really well for our Veterans Suicide Awareness and Prevention Swim on August seventh. It's still a go for two swim waves, one from zero-nine until noon, and then the next one starting twelve-thirty to fifteen-thirty. Right now, we have a total of twenty-three swimmers signed up, really pushing for more relays to participate as well. We have up to sixteen vendors, six food trucks. I think there's going to be a brief coming out about the North Main Street being shut down for this event as well. As you can see, we have an official ceremony with Time on Target for the All-Veteran Jump Team to be at twelve-fifteen. So they'll be jumping in on that green strip right between the road and the lake. We'll have the National Anthem. We're going to have a tow truck with the American flag flying high. We'll have all the Gold Star family members that wish to come out be there. We'll have a moment of silence for their loved ones that have committed suicide. And then we'll list all the names that we have at that time, just to give it a remembrance for those people. Like Ranger Rick of Man22 says, "People die twice in this life, once when they die physically and the second when we don't remember them anymore." So ultimately, August seventh is a day to remember those that decided to take their own lives and not to be ashamed of what suicide is. So August seventh is turning out to be a really great event. In front of you, you have the main eye catcher flyer, hopefully, to get more participants, the course set up and the plan. We have the JROTC with Sergeant Major Murray coming out. She're going to do the color guard, and then they're actually going to volunteer as well. She was describing her concern for her own students, especially with COVID, not being able to be with friends and family during this time. So it's a good opportunity for them to come out, volunteer, participate. They'll be placing the flags and the plaques with the veterans who did commit suicide along the lake. So you'll be able to see every name and face that we have along the lake that day. On July thirty-first, Friday, at Twenty-two Clicks in Hope Mills, there'll actually be a T-shirt sale for twenty-two dollars each. All profits go to Veterans Suicide Awareness through the Man22 program that we've teamed up with. And our president, Ricky Love, is actually advertising that for us today. We chose teal because teal is the PTSD awareness color. So come on out. I'll send out an email to all the board members and Madam Mayor with that date, just as a reminder. And if we could push that out, that'd be great. But the owners are excited. They actually are sponsoring and bringing out their food truck for the event as well. So on July thirty-first, you can get your T-shirt as well and be matching with us. August sixth, we're having a dinner at Kraken Scholes in Fayetteville. They've been a big supporter for the shirts as well. There'll be a raffle there. We've had a lot of donations, food. Just be a community event prior to the actual swim itself. Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Morrison have been awesome. They've been getting the food trucks and the vendors. So I really appreciate them having my back in this time. The only concern that I have is the water quality. Obviously, that's not something that any of us can change. But I think that we need to be actively monitoring it, and as soon as the water quality is good, those signs change. Because that's been something that I've really been struggling with, getting people to actually participate in the swim, is the water quality. I know that we take it seriously because we're Hope Mills, and we appreciate letting our town members know of what's going on. But I can guarantee when I swim in Carolina lakes, it's, it's the same water. It's the same thing. So I think we just need to continue to monitor that, and if we can get more tests done prior to the swim, I think that will only help us. Because I know DC Lopez says that they don't actually have a boat to go into the center of the lake where the swim is taking place. They're taking it along the shore where the geese are and the ducks are and where it's not the best quality. So my main concern is that we're actually getting into the water where the swim will actually take place, getting those numbers. And then as soon as we get those numbers, those signs of caution, caution come down, and hopefully we can actually get this event to the event that it's supposed to be of a hundred-plus swimmers. But right now, we're currently at twenty-three individuals, and I think it's because everyone sees those signs. They get concerned, obviously, for their own health. But I think we need to get more tests done, and particularly the week of, just to verify. And again, not along the shore, not near the dam, but where the water is actually being swam in for the event.
Okay. And I think that's something our town manager can, can take care of for us, maybe. I know that they're usually tested, what, once a month?
Yeah, we do at least once a month, but it's hard because this isn't an open swimming lake.
Yeah.
So there aren't state mandated testing sites. So it's not a quantitative... You know, it's not a scientific method that they have to test it.
Right.
We aren't required to test the water at all. So we have been testing it, obviously with rising temperatures and more rain. It's doubtful that the test results will get more favorable as you go into July and August. It's a warning.
I understand that, but also we can compare that to the actual state of North Carolina. When I worked with MicroBack Labs, when I called them to get the results from the last one, they said with any other body of water, it's the same numbers. And again, I understand it's Hope, it's the Town of Hope Mills responsibility. But at this time, it's just killing my registration for this event.
And we do have a boat, and we have taken samples out in the center. Those numbers are indicative of the vote. We're monitoring that, and we have a news media person that continues to get our data. They haven't seen that come out, but it's something that really, you know, you get tested in a different half hour, different two minutes, and from a different spot, the numbers are going to vary drastically.
Okay.
The state recommended levels are like a two-hundred, and it's hard to know that's going to be...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I requested some tests on the lake a few weeks ago, and I was told the test would be ongoing through September. But I don't know how accurate or what you guys got to have or nothing, or when the tests are done. I just remember being told that. Is that still ongoing?
So we are continuing the test at least monthly. Ms. Brown is not here tonight to describe our, our process. It's a voluntary process, and it's very indiscriminate how it's done. So it's not quantitative enough to actually give you... This is, this is what it's tested as, the water quality. It's just a sample, and we take the testing, so... I don't know if anybody in this staff knows anything about that, but we are continuing on with that. But I, it just really varies with the temperature and runoff. It really doesn't have anything to do with ducks and geese. It's red bacteria, fecal count, which is a lot of sources along the whole river basin. I can get you a more detailed explanation of everything, but it's not, it's not...
I understand, but at the end of the day, like, science is science, and so there has to be a number that coordinates with, hey, caution, no swimming. And I understand that, and again, it's enter at your own risk, but there has to be a number that the Town of Hope Mills would feel comfortable with, because it's, it went up before Fourth of July, and I know I saw everyone and their mother out there swimming anyway. But for the swimmers that actually are bringing from Hope Mills to, from Wilmington, from Raleigh, they're like, no, we saw that sign. We're not coming. So bringing them from out of town and like bringing everything, like, we're proud to be Hope Mills, I just need more data, more numbers for that actual water so we can have a standard. That's just what I'm struggling with, because that sign's been up since July second or third, and it's not working in my favor. So... And I want to make this a big event, and regardless of that, the event's still going to occur. We've already decided that, rain or shine, because Hope Mills, you guys have been so accommodating and so opening. So we have other options to like turn it into like a kayak kind of thing. But at the end of the day, this is part of Ricky Love's dream of doing a triathlon event of a swim, a bike, and a run. So that's our goal, is just trying to get more tests so that it's not done once a month or however it works right now.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just, clarity point, and this is probably to Scott. Today's July nineteenth, and we're looking at what the next couple of weeks. So what is the schedule for testing? I want to make sure that, one, we have a boat, and that, and that, and that we are testing out there in the middle of the lake where the swimming event's going to occur. So both of those are correct?
So we do take a sample in the middle of the lake, and we also do have scheduled testing coming up. I think, I think where the resistancy is, you're going, is that, like, if we take a test in the middle of the lake, that doesn't mean the water quality is great.
Correct.
Does that make sense? Like, we don't want to inadvertently take down the warning signs when we know that other samples may still be extremely off of the standard. Does that make sense? I don't know, I don't know how to explain that other than our, our testing is not mandated. We don't have to do it at all, but we do take it. And that, those test results we've been getting are pretty consistent of what we should be getting into the future as it gets hotter. And so, like, if you put, oh, we got a low test result, let's take all the signs down. It doesn't mean that the water...
Right.
I mean, every swim in open lakes in the state have some inherent risk of things that are in the water, right? So if we, if we get a low test result and we take down all the signs, that doesn't mean that the risk is gone. It just means that we decided to take down the signs because we are basing that off of a non-scientific test.
Will we be testing over the next two weeks as we get closer between now and the event?
The chief stepped out, so I'm not, I assume, yes, we did, we do that.
Okay. I think that's what you wanted to know, too.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't matter if we do a test on the sixth, the seventh, it might be different.
Right, I understand that. But, you know, at the end of the, it has to come down to science. I understand what we're saying here. However, if we educate people on that, leave the signs up, but we push out through public media, this is what this test was on this day, this day was this, this day was this. Again, I know that Hope Mills Lake is no different than Carolina Lakes, White Lake. I've swam in all of them. They're all the same. I know that wa-, lake quality is never going to be high. As an open water swimmer myself, I know I swim my twenty-two miles in Lake Tahoe, and that's about as good of water quality as I'm ever going to get in my life. But there has to be something to push out to the public, because VSAP is struggling on getting swimmers to actually come out to this. Yes, sir. He wants to, yeah.
Just to give you off, off the, what Sam is saying is, as the president of the local Vipul area triathlon leaders, normally we have around fourteen to fifteen weekly that show up and does the open water swim for the Hope Mills in preparation for this. I have two now that are willing to swim because of the restrictions and the warnings. And I've had at least twenty people, two being local business owners, that said that they were not going to swim because of the, the warnings and the bacteria calls. And understand the, the scientific, the approach to it. But at the end of the day, numbers are numbers, and if we can reach for a goal of numbers, then that means that, that's the standard. That's the, we have met the standard or you have not met the standard. Everything has that fine line of getting the standard and not the standard. So everybody's excited, and like Mr. Lewis said, the event's going to go on regardless. We're just not going to get that max participation. That's going to bring unity together in the whole name of, if you're suicidal, then walk away. But every day, like Mr. Lewis said, we get messages, we get phone calls. And right now, the only concern is the water quality. Everything else is so thumbs up, the vendors, the local leadership, the community, the Gold Star family members, everything coming together. Right, right now, that's the only issue.
Madam Mayor. Uh-huh.
I, I'd like to ask, so there's a state level, but there's, there is, there is data to tell, tell us, so we can't set that.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're not one of the open swimming lakes that is under the state mandated and checked and monitored. We're just doing this because the city of Hope Mills wants to monitor and check ourselves. So I, I guess, you know, the entire program is very discretionary where we test. And we try to make that replicated and sort of do the same thing every time. There are lakes that are open to swimming as a full lake, and the state does, you know, list those and have standards. And that's the standard that they're basing that two-hundred number off of. So when those go above two-hundred, I don't know if they're closing down, but ours, ours is not one of those lakes. It's just an open lake. I believe, you know, more appropriate thing to do on our side would be to have a permanent, hey, it's open water. We don't test the water, because a lot of places don't.
May I ask if, if we're not required, could we remove the sign? If, if, if we're... If, if, if we're saying it's not required, then that's just a voluntary sign that's, that's a.
Is that not a liability issue? Because I think that's what we're talking, is that not a liability issue? Because I'm saying, we may test, and it still might not be in your favor. So with the test, we could test and come up with a data, but it's still, the signs may be there because it still may, it may not be in your favor, but isn't that a liability issue? That's what I'm concerned about.
I think it's more a public health issue than a liability issue. I don't know if we necessarily have liability if we take the sign down when it's not required, but it's more informational purposes for the public to be aware. So it's, it's more a public health than it is liability issue.
Which the swim at your own risk was what we used previously. So that, that sign, again, would tie into that, you know, if you, as you're, you're swimming at your own risk, which is something that might make a difference as far as, and they're, they are being out away from their actual swim area. The swimming areas would be a closed swimming area, whereas they're out in the open lake.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and that's actually, the water moves so much faster there, it's colder there. So that's just our main concern, is that it's not being tested enough. And again, it might not work out in our favor, and then we will completely agree to whatever sign needs to be done, but the whole testing once a month or bi-weekly leading up to the swim of August 7th is just not enough for us at this time to get the max participation that Mr. Love said. Is there any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think the swimming, swimming at your risk is, part of that is because we don't have a lifeguard there. That's part of why that sign is there, swimming at your own risk. So, because we don't have a lifeguard. But we have a different part when we talk about a, a public health issue.
If the bacteria count's high, yes.
See, that's, that's a different issue.
She's just asking for, she's asking for additional testing.
Yes. And, and, and I think that before we're looking at this type of event, I think that should be warranted, that we should do that additional testing just to make sure that all the water is good, one way or the other. And like Commissioner Lake said, if you test it on one day, the next day, the readings may be different. We don't know. But I did, I did want to clarify that swim at your own risk comment that you made. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you guys for what you're doing.
Oh, yeah.
Any effort that you make to help out is a blessing. Any event that you put on, everything's not easy. Hard sometimes, you have so many curtains to go through to get to the finish line. But I, I really appreciate, on behalf of, I can't speak on their, for us, anyway, on behalf of myself, thank you for, for everything you do, both of you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, again, I totally understand public health. Again, I've swam in some pretty nasty stuff before. So even if it's still the same status quo, we'll have those 23 swimmers come out who are understanding of the sign. But I just ask for more tests at this time. And I have additional flyers that I can leave with Ms. Sterling, is that okay for everyone?
Yeah, that'd be good, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, next we have the presentation of the yard of the month. And this, I'm going to turn it over to Tina Yosef, which is the chairman of our appearance commission, and let her take care of it as far as that presentation. Congratulations to our winner for this month.
I'm actually going to make this short and sweet, good evening, so that way she can go home. For July, it was Ms. Chong on Crenshaw. And again, y'all know what the sign looks like, so this is her sign. I'm going to have Jamie put it in her yard for her. But yeah, she is the one who got it for this month. If you know of anybody else, as a matter of fact, she actually gave us two yards. So I'm going to go look at two more yards.
Can we let her come up and present it to me?
I'm not sure she, do you, do you want to come up?
We'd just like to take a picture of you with the sign, so if somebody would take a picture so we would have that of the, a yard of the month, so.
Who's got all the cameras?
Grilli.
Grilli's got all the cameras.
Yeah.
Grilli's good with the camera. Jim too. Yeah.
And congratulations, and thank you for having a beautiful yard.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a public hearing. This is case number 21-042. It's consideration of the transformative REI LLC property subdivision review. It's a request for a waiver from the requirement of street frontage on a private or public street for subdivision. Hope Mills subdivision ordinance, section 86A-403C, street frontage, so, and R10. The total acreage is five plus or minus acres, and it's located west of Cherry Street and north of Spreading Branch Road. And it's been submitted by Palo Blackburn on behalf of transformative Ray LLC owner. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin to give us.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Hello.
Single sport members at state, this is case 21-042, which is a subdivision ordinance waiver.
And Mr. McLaughlin, if you'd speak up.
Sorry, brother. I know we saw the new, the mic, I didn't know if it was on.
It's not on.
All right, so the subject property is a five-acre parcel located just north of the existing Fox Meadows subdivision and just east of the Bonner Place community. The site is also just south of the Southview High School, and it's currently vacant and heavily wooded. Access to the site is provided off of Cherry Street via a 20-foot wide, unimproved, 894-foot-long private drive with Cherry Street existing as a paved town-maintained roadway. There currently is not enough frontage for the subject property that exists along Cherry Street. The northern side of the private drive is bordered by Southview High School with the southern side bordered by existing single-family residential structures. In terms of the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the subdivision ordinance to facilitate the construction of three single-family residences. The lot size is adequate for the creation of three single-family lots. However, compliance with the following section of the Hope Mills ordinances presents challenges for development. Section 86A-403C minimum lot standards, this is the actual section that they're trying to get a waiver from. That's pretty standard what they're asking for. The issue is that our standards and specifications manual, which is not referencing our subdivision ordinance, outlines the development of residential development. In our standards and specifications manual, it says all areas, alleys, private and public, and streets shall be designed and constructed to town NCDOT standards. So in our specifications manual, there, there's about a minimum of 45 feet of right-of-way that's needed, curb and gutter for a roadway to be able to meet town standards. So in a nutshell, the reason why the recommendation is denied is because even if you waive the subdivision requirements to allow for the development because it doesn't have the frontage, we still have yet to receive a plat or a design that shows access to this lot through a minimum of a 45-foot-wide driveway that would allow us to have a road build to town standards that the town could actually take over for maintenance. And that's the reason why the recommendation is for the. We've met with the developer about three times, well, maybe twice over the last couple of years. And the main issue was trying to get the right-of-way. They needed to meet the standards to bring the roadway up to construction, not necessarily a waiver of the frontage requirements in the subdivision. I stated before, you can get three lots subdivided, it's big enough for three lots. It's just that small dirt road that I'll get to. This is a map of the area. What you see here is a long winding road. This is Cherry Street, it's a maintain of the town. But this is the roadway that creates the issue. It's a small dirt road, this is the lot. So it's kind of landlocked, there is access to it. And we have several different developments where we have situations like this, and those roadways have to be brought up to town standards to give access to it. There's another section that basically states that private streets are only allowed in our standards and specifications manual on commercial development. All residential development has to be accessible by a road that meets DOT standards. This is a copy of the zoning map, water, sewer, availability. This is the site plan, and this is a view of that shit. So what you're both ultimately looking at is, in our standards and specs manual, any roadway that's done that gives access to a residence development has to have at least 45 feet of right-of-way minimum, curb and gutter on each side, sidewalks and the four-feet sidewalks. So I think the issue is that we don't know, they have land on each side. It would be their responsibility to acquire the right-of-way needed to meet that standard. But as of what we see now, I do not see anything that tells us that even if you waive the frontage requirements in our subdivision ordinance, that you'd actually have something that would eliminate the requirement of the standards and specs.
So is there?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's already houses in there, correct?
Not in the subject property they're trying to develop, there are houses back there.
Before you get to that property, there's already. So, so we're talking about developing a dirt road past where the houses already are now, right? Is that what you're talking about?
So this is a view looking down Cherry Street. Basically, to the left side, it's just, I think that's Southview property to the, yeah, to the left, to the, basically, the fifth side.
It's a big piece of property.
But this is the dirt road that you basically travel to to get access to it. And like I said, that would have to be brought up to town standard. So our issues that we've had with the developer has not been the frontage. It's been meeting the requirements of standards and specs to get access to the property.
Mayor, can I, just want to educate me. On this, on this page right here, it says, staff recommendation if applicable is approval of the request. Recommended action, town of Hope Mills staff recommends approval of the request. And then on this letter here to the manager, it's staff recommendation, recommendation, recommendation is denied on the backside. Am I reading that wrong?
Now, what section are you reading from?
On the, in the letter here to, to the town manager, it's got under staff recommendation on the end, says recommendation is denied.
That's the staff recommendation from town staff.
And then it has, on the front, it says staff recommendation if applicable, sta, town of Hope Mills staff.
Oh, okay, now that's a typo. You talking about on the memo, cover memo?
Yeah.
Yeah, now that's a typo.
Okay, so the staff is recommending.
That should recommend denial, yes.
Yeah, that was a question I had to Commissioner Marley when I read, when I first read it, same thing.
Just checking out.
Yeah, now that's a typo.
What we have, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is inadequate entry to and from a three-house development.
It's basically a right-of-way issue. We don't dictate where they get the right-of-way from. I think they've had some creative conversations with the adjacent property owners. One property owner has basically come to county schools. I think they approached some of the private development. And they have an easement agreement in here that they submitted with the application, but that does not indicate that the easement is going to yield a widening of the right-of-way needing to meet standards and specs. So what I see on the site plan that was submitted is the same site plan we have been dealing with earlier, which basically shows that they just want access to the site if we develop.
May I ask, what does this dirt path connect to on both ends?
Cherry Street on one end, here, and then a vacant lot at the back.
That used to be all one piece of property.
It's a maintenance gate at the very end of that.
It used to be all one piece of property, and there was a home, big home back there. And that dirt was actually the driveway to the home. The home burned, and it's been years ago, it's been a long time ago.
It's big enough to meet the qualifications of subdivision in terms of the lot size, its access to it. We have a developer in a specific part of town right now that's having that exact same problem. It's a historically vacant lot that everybody's aware of, it's about 14 acres in size. But the roadway that leads to it has to be brought up to town standard.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Another, I know it's a public hearing or whatever. Is there any, has there been any discussions about any improvements that could be made? Because, because I, there ain't no way a fire truck's going to get back there. If those houses burn, catch on fire, there's a medical call. I mean, you're talking about over 800-foot lay. It's going to be over 1,000 foot to the nearest hydrant going in there.
Now, that's the other part that is not even part of this conversation.
But, I mean, that, that would be my concern, if there's a medical emergency, a fire. I mean, you're, you can't get nothing back there. And so I guess my question is, has there been any other discussion with the developer or whoever's doing it on improvements of what's there now to get access back there? Even if it's not to the standard, is there something to improve, uh, improve it from what we're looking at? Because you're right on that fence, and then you're right on them trees. You know, I mean, you're talking about taking a half a million, or three-quarter of a million-dollar fire truck down a two-rut dirt road to bury it, to rip out a fuel tank, to rip.
I would say that's been the primary challenge at getting it developed. They would have to meet those, the requirements of standards and specs mirror DOT standards. So you can't get it by that at all. But in addition to that, they would still have to meet all the requirements of every other agency. What you're talking about is fire. They would have to locate fire hydrants, they would have to have the minimum distance to be able to get a truck in and out of that. So a lot of these standards mirror each other. So even if they were to get the waiver from the subdivision ordinance, that is not addressed.
I mean, how are we going to provide them trash service? You know what I mean? How are we going to do the trash truck down in there to them to empty their trash cans and?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Marley. I mean, one of the, the last thing that we need to do is approve development that does not meet the standards of this town in roadways. That is the very last thing we need to do. And I, and I don't see that presented here. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd make the motion to deny, like, case 21-042.
Public hearing.
Sorry, sorry, public hearing.
And, and I think that was the, the question I had would be that if the waiver is what we would be denying, the request for the waiver, so if they, if they wanted to develop it and use all the standards, then it would be, it, the waiver is what you're denying.
Yeah.
If you, if you deny it.
I, I, I struggle with trying to understand what the request was going to do to alleviate the main issue. The issue that we had, presented them with from the very beginning was the lack of right-of-way. A waiver from the frontage is not going to address that, it's not going to make that go away. That, but that's one reason why I made sure to highlight in my staff report the standards and specs manual, just to make it very clear, even if you approved the right-of-way, I mean, approved the waiver, they still have to meet standards and specs. But since I don't see anything that appears to be moving in that direction, the recommendation is denied.
Well, and I think what the, when I read this, what I was looking at is that the comparison was being made to the actual driveways that are to those other homes, that those were not treated as a subdivision or as, as an extension of the road. So that's where they're showing a, that's the comparison being made is it, there's a, there's something there showing that, that other homes were built, yeah. Okay? Yes, sir.
So clarification for me too, we're, like the mayor said, we're not, we're not denying them to build whatever they want to build. We're just denying, we, we, I say we're denying, we would just be looking at the issue of the waiver.
Yes.
To the streets going in.
Yes.
But they would still be able to do whatever they.
If they did standard street.
And, and again, I, I didn't see anything changed. We met with them several times, and the main issue was trying to get right-of-way from the adjacent property owners, they couldn't get it. So when they filed it, I assumed that that had changed, and it had. So I don't think, again, I, I don't think the issue was the, the frontage requirements. I think their heavy lift is getting, I think they only got 22 feet now. They need about 23 more feet, which is double the sizes out there now to be able to meet the standards and specs, and I just don't see the land along that roadway to do that.
Another question I got too, one of these pictures I looked at shows a. Another question I got too. One of these pictures I looked at shows a turnaround on there. Do you have that on here?
Hold on a sec.
A cul-de-sac turnaround?
Yeah.
In there where the house is going. Is it, cause you know that, in the fire code, there's certain measurements and criteria to dead ends and turnarounds and the appendices of the, of the code. Does, does that meet that?
I'm not sure if we even got to fire part of our code with the cul-de-sacs, but any development we do, they still have to get through all those departments. So, you know, regardless of what it turned out, if this was very favorable and they got in there and those, and that cul-de-sac radius wasn't big enough, they're gonna have to amend it to be able to meet.
I mean, I, I want them to build there. I mean, but we wanna make sure it's safe for, you know, so we can protect them, whoever's living in those houses, so we can get services to them and protect them. And if we can't do that, I mean...
That, that was our approach as well. We actually, I'm not in opposition of development of land, it's just how to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what our main issue was. It's not that we don't think that houses can be put there. It's a large piece of property. It's just when access to it has to be done in the same manner.
Is it, I, I keep talking. Is there any way that, that, I know you say you've talked to the developer two or three times, but I mean, they haven't offered a solution to improve in what's there now.
The last conversation I had with them was that they received something of an offer from one of the adjacent property owners to acquire the right-of-way needed, but it was something that was uh well beyond what they were, they would be able to provide to that pro- um, that the adjacent property owner would be able to meet. Um, but I haven't had any other conversations with them about any other change. I mean, I don't know of any other thing they could do that would meet standard suspects. Um, standard suspects is pretty, uh, pretty clear what you have to do. Four-foot sidewalks on each side, forty-five foot minimum right-of-way. Um, I'm not sure of anything else they can do that would not meet that requirement and still allows them to do.
If, if, if they don't, if the developer doesn't get the waiver, does that mean that they make improvements or they can get other solutions to the problem? They can come back, can they come back and ask for a, a different waiver? I mean, this ain't the end all if they don't get this waiver.
To me, if they actually got the right-of-way, I'd be standing here in support of the waiver. That's my point. Um, so again, the waiver really isn't the, the concern. It's really um the, the possible development of that street without uh town standards. Because ultimately, when we develop streets, we're doing it for the purpose of us taking over the street from there.
Right, right, right.
And with the conditions of our streets, that's not a conversation.
Can we, let's do the open public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question though.
We're gonna open.
I do have a question. Chancellor, was this, was this presented to Cumberland County Planning Board?
Based on the way this goes, a, a waiver from the subdivision requirements does not require planning board.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Consideration.
Okay, this time let's open public hearing.
One thing.
Okay.
We have one common denominator here. The mayor mentioned there was a house back there and it burned. If you can't get a fire truck, truck back there, what's gonna happen to another one? It's gonna burn.
Years ago.
Okay, all right.
All right, this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this waiver, in favor of this development? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this uh development? And if you do, if you'll just come to the microphone, introduce yourself with your address and then you can speak to the board. Does anyone want to speak against this development? Against the waiver?
If there is no one of them, okay, there.
First off, I couldn't hear everything that would be discussed. I don't know if you've got loudspeakers at work or not, but um my understanding is this is a multi-family buildings?
No, it's three houses.
Three houses, single family?
Yeah, that's what...
Well, that's not...
Okay, we need your...
It's not as impactful on what we were concerned about.
Okay, would you, first, I got to have your name and address since it's a public hearing.
My name is Robert Byrne. I live at thirty-five thirty Antilles Circle.
Okay.
Just off Cherry Street.
Okay.
Um, another thing, I don't know what the name of that road actually is, but on Google Maps, it's, it's listed as Antilles Circle, not as Cherry Street. And part of that drive is posted as private. So I don't know if there's a concern with being able to get past that issue. If, if those people already have some kind of domain to that road, I, I don't know that you can just take that away from them. But the biggest concern we've had over the years with establishing more housing in there, especially multiple housing, is the impact on the school, Baltimore Elementary School, the traffic pattern there. That place is, is a mess in the mornings if you're trying to get out and go to work. And if you just add a little bit more to it, it's gonna become even more exasperating. Um, is there anything else?
Okay. Sure, come forward and just introduce yourself and address.
I'm Tom Lake, thirty-five forty-seven Antilles Circle. We've had a fire back there and there was a death on that fire. Cause the fire trucks couldn't get back there and there was, they were remoted back there. We also had a fire at the schoolyard, inside the schoolyard, right, right in the back there about three years ago. And the fire trucks and everything couldn't get that access there. They had to come around in front of the school and open up the gate and everything to get there. And that wood burned over there. And, and then we have the other problem, that it really gets congested when school's in session. And I do believe that wherever that proposal for that road is, you'd have to buy, they'd have to buy some of the school property that's on there. I don't know exactly how far the school comes over there and where private property starts. But I do know the fences there from the schools and there's a couple of week, couple of feet from there that actually belong to the school. So whoever's gonna digger with that's gonna have to buy both of those things. And it just wouldn't come up to standards. So as far as I'm concerned, it, it's a no-go here. What, what, it's just a piece of dead property back there and everything got developed around it. And now it's a piece of dead wood back there unless they can buy their way for some kind of access from the other, what I call, I think it's called the spreading bridge, uh housing area, whatever the name. There's, the only way I could see to come into that is from that new development that's to the, to the, I think to the south of it. And that's all I gotta say about that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any, anyone else would like to speak against this proposal?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close public hearing. And uh, any other discussion?
No other discussion, Mayor, but I'll make the motion.
All right.
To deny case twenty-one dash zero four two.
Okay, we have a motion to deny case twenty-one dash zero forty-two. Uh, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for, for coming and participating. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. And with public comments, the uh, the, well, you do sign up prior to the meeting and you're allowed to have three minutes, which our clerk uh times it. We just need you to identify yourself when you come to the podium and you have three minutes. At this time, we have Patricia Jones.
Good evening. Um, Patricia Jones, I reside over at thirty-five thirteen Boulder Street. I also own the house at thirty-five twelve Boulder Street. I am trying to plead upon this council to try to help us make a resolve to a house that we have deemed as a neighborhood, a house of nuisance, where we, I myself have witnessed, um, somebody dragged out of the house that had been needing medical assistance for passing out from using drugs. I have myself witnessed on my property hypodermic needles, fake bags of cocaine. They've actually broken one of my properties from this thirty-five eighteen is the property that I'm talking about. Um, numerous police calls. Every time they arrest somebody, it's somebody that's from his house that he has over there that is, there's a warrant for their arrest. The tenants that he has over there are all part of constant all-night traffic from eleven to five in the morning, up and down the street. There's homeless people staying on the property, living in their vehicles, putting tents behind the properties. And we, we're talking about eleven properties total on this property, two of which I own, two are sitting right here. There's two other properties. So A, properties other than his properties that are having on a dead-end road deal with this on a day-to-day basis. It's every day. And I myself need help. They are here for help from our community to try to get this somehow resolved in some way, shape, or form.
Mayor, can we, can we turn that over to the town manager to check on and...
Sure.
Call over.
What was the other street? Um, thirty-five sixteen Boulder Street is the one I'm referring to.
No, the one that's the problem.
I mean, thirty-five eighteen, not thirty-five eighteen.
It's...
There, I apologize, thirty-five eighteen Boulder Street.
Okay.
It's a multiple-family area right there. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time taken. You're listening to me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. If there was anything on our consent agenda that you would like moved to um new business, we may do so. If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have old business and that is discussion and possible action on Board of Commissioner's policy. And that's behind tab eight, if you wanna go to that and have it before you so you can look at it. Um, I know that it was um, one item that you discussed was the actually changing the format of our agenda. And that was um, in order to do that, we have to change what is in our rules of procedure. So I guess I'll turn it over. I know that Mr. Commissioner Marley asked for this to be on the agenda or asked to talk about this. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Marley if he would like to um start the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I see on um, I believe it's uh page seven, rule sixteen in order of business. I think actually Ms. McCray has requested that the official comments be moved up to the beginning of the meeting. I see that change has been made. I also had a question uh about the um procedure for adding items to the agenda. I know that we had talked about that. Was there any change in that area made?
I didn't make any chat. I didn't get any instruction from you guys on what change you want.
I was, and I may be wrong, but I was under the understanding that um at the last meeting that it was gonna be brought back to us, um, a recommendation, cause we were trying to get it, get away from one commissioner just at, being able to add items at will that we would vote on it at the meeting prior, that if a commissioner had a item to be put on the agenda that they wanted, that they would bring it up and then it would be voted on and whether we wanted to have it on the agenda or not.
So we, if I can speak. So we included all of the formal procedures um at the last meeting. I, I took away from that was things could be added on Tuesday so that staff would not be directed to do research and information gathering that any, any commissioner putting something on it. It would be approved at the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, which means that any of the group could make a motion to accept or remove that. And then if you were to accept it and act on that, it would be given that staff would be directed for the next meeting to bring back that information, rather than just having information more committed specifically not prepared for it. Um, and then, I don't wanna speak for Dan, but he had mentioned that the rules exist and it seems like if we just follow what it's stating there, we should be okay. This, these are taken from the North Carolina. It's, it's basically the exact copy of the document in the manual. Um, and if you wish to change it, we can definitely do that, but it, it seems like as long as we're not getting numerous requests and things, and if we just put those items on for discussion, then you could strike those items down or you could have to say, yes, we'll talk about those, bring it back at the next meeting. And I, and I personally felt that that gives us adequate time to prepare and bring it back at the next meeting.
The whole thing, I think...
And that the council could give us direction on what they want and such.
I think we're trying to cut out unnecessary work for the staff too, you know? Um, I, I'll turn it over for discussion. I, you know, the board heard what the manager said. I mean, if that's good with everybody, I just, you know, I, I don't wanna waste the staff time. I don't wanna waste the board's time. Um, our, our meetings are long enough, you know? If, you know, there's no reason I should come in here and if I got five things I wanna talk about, as long as I get it in on Friday or, or by five o'clock on whatever day, that it just automatically goes on the agenda and then everybody's scrambling to five, to get those five things I wanna discuss, it's like I'm monopolizing the meeting. And I, you know, in, in my mind, in my opinion, I think it should be voted on. If I bring an item up and it gets a second to add it to the agenda and it goes to a vote, if three commissioners wanna hear it, then we should talk about it. If three, at least three of us don't wanna hear it, then it shouldn't even be put on. So, um...
Commissioner Marley, you have that option now as the rules are, as the rules are presented. These rules are right by the UNC School of Government, sir. I mean, they, they mirror exactly what's written. And you have the opportunity as each board member to either approve the agenda with additions or deletions, how you see fit.
I, I would point out that it does have a citizen agenda method as well, that generally I, I wouldn't have staff do a bunch of research on just a citizen initiated item until the council directed a staff on that.
Yeah, I think the general idea, at least how I took the discussion of the last meeting was that, you know, someone could add something to the agenda, but there's sort of been an understanding that staff wouldn't do a bunch of legwork on an agenda item until the board has discussed it at the meeting. So, you know, that anything added to the agenda by a single commissioner would really be for discussion purposes at the meeting, not for action items necessarily.
Until the following meeting.
Until the following meeting.
I, and I, I think that the concern was that that item would be, that's why they wanted to move official comments to the front, so that item would be brought up at this, say this meeting. And then it, if it were something that the board wanted to continue with, there would be a motion made to add that to our next agenda. But what is happening is just like the um agenda prepared for tonight, the item was added to the agenda and then of course it has to be deleted. And that would be much nicer for the commissioners uh if they uh on the front end, before it was ever put on the agenda, if they had the ability to say, um, I want this put on the agenda and it would be, the research would be done by the next meeting. I think that's what they were asking for was to have that official, that's why the movement of official comments was, I think, placed. And if it was something serious, you could go ahead and add it to that agenda. I think that's what I heard last time. But I asked Dr. McCray because I think she was uh commenting...
It was a little bit of both. It was like tonight, everybody's gone. If you, we would've made official comments at the beginning, people would've been able to hear the announcements and now everybody's gone. So it's like, it made sense to, to do that. And if you are the official and you have an item to bring, you can talk about it and then you can bring it up if you wanna add it to the agenda. So it was like twofold.
Yeah.
It's certainly up to the board. These, these rules are, you know, they're, they're certainly modeled on the UNC School of Government rules, the recommended rules, but they're subject to change by the board. Um, you know, the recommended rules not required, you have to have this in place. So the structure of the meeting is entirely up to the board. And if you don't like it, nothing different, we can do it.
Madam Mayor? Okay.
I think if we just keep the official comment at the beginning and we can just make the motion that we wanna add it for discussion that night or um to add to the next agenda, I think that'll take care of it. I think if the board agrees with that, I think that would take care of it.
If we did that, we'd have to move that ahead of the approval, did you, correct?
Yeah.
Cause if you're gonna add an item.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I guess official comments would have to be the first item of business. I don't know how you would do that.
Well, and I, I will say, under the current rules, you are allowed as commissioners to come in at the beginning of the meeting and when it's time to approve the agenda, you can say, if that's what I'd like to add an item for discussion purposes and have and have the board vote on adding that item at that time. So you, you do have that option of bringing something to the meeting for discussion purposes or for action purposes, if it's allowed, uh, to be acted on personally. I mean, there is, there is some flexibility in rules as it is written.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's taken me twenty years to learn this procedure. What do we want to change for?
Any other?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
Okay, if we have all these procedures and everything, and, and if we follow them and don't deviate them because we have an own personal agenda or something we want to say, um, that would be fine. But as long as we follow the rules the way it's written and not deviate from them, it's perfect.
So we don't need any action on this, do we?
Well, if you're going to move official comments, you do.
Well, right.
Move official comments.
Yep.
As the version before you tonight, uh, has the, I believe the only change is moving official comments in the beginning of the meeting. So if you adopt these rules, then that would be the only change. If you want to see additional changes, then we can bring it back with the official changes as discussed.
So move it to the first.
The official comments.
As it's written on page seven.
As it's on page seven.
You know, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The only setback I see in moving the official comments to the front of the agenda, because a lot of things happen during a meeting that if somebody needs a, a pat on the back, we have the opportunity given to them, give it to them because we learned it during the meeting. But if we wait, uh, or put it at the front of the meeting, then we don't have a choice then, but not to give them a, a that-a-boy. So...
But that's still at the first of it. I mean, plus the first.
Yes. Madam Mayor.
Yes. So if we, if we do it at the end, if they're not here, they're still not going to hear it unless they go online and look at it, because everybody's generally gone by this time.
Oh, I understand. Either way, it doesn't matter to me, first or last. I'm just saying that things that happen that we need to give somebody a compliment, uh, or a thank you, it's going to be hard to do at the front. But it's up to you guys. I don't care, whatever you want to do.
Okay, we have some, we have action, which if somebody liked to make a motion to approve the change of order, with the understanding that if we're, if we're going to approve the agenda before they do official comments, then it's got to be, that needs to be...
Then, then if you have an item that you come to the meeting wanting to add, if you would add that at the approval of the agenda.
Okay. So they have, yes, ma'am?
If the full of the agenda item itself is written with additions or deletions said that...
They just got to...
...you to make your additions or deletions at that point.
And that's what they've got to be aware of, that it's going to be during that period of time that they're going to add something. But the idea is, if they're adding something at the meeting, that the option, the, the staff research and all those things that might have to be done, uh, would be done by the next meeting. That's what I'm understanding. Otherwise, we'll be adding stuff at the beginning of the meeting, still no staff input, and then we'll be making, taking action on information. We only got that moment when we approve the agenda. So that's...
The idea is there's flexibility.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, hey, you, you don't want to have a restriction necessarily of taking action, because there may be things that come up that are added that are, you don't need a lot of staff input or information, and you may want to act relatively quickly instead of waiting for...
Well, that, like tonight, giving the money to the teams.
Right.
That would be something, would have to be done tonight.
Have that motion made and say, okay, well, we'll talk about that in a few weeks. There are certain items that are relatively minor that, that you want to vote on immediately.
Okay.
So the way it works right now is, you know, you can add something, and you can add for action purposes, but the board could decide, well, we need further information to make this decision, let's bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
So right now, you have that flexibility of voting on it at times introduced, or saying, we need more information, bring it back.
Okay. Or not adding it at all?
Or not adding it at all.
Okay. All right, Zach, and y'all understand?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've served on this board for four years, and for four years where official comments are located on the agenda have worked quite well, because it follows the, the reports and information items, it follows the manager's report, and it follows staff comments. And I, I just, I don't see the major significance on moving official comments to the beginning of the meeting, when you've got the entire agenda that's going to be presented before the public. I, I just don't see the, I don't see the relevance of it. I don't see the importance of it. And I don't know how it's going to improve the meeting. It's worked well for the four years I've been on this board, and perhaps the years before I was on this board. So those are my comments, Mayor.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
It won't bother me either way it goes. I know how to follow the rules. You can keep the agenda the way that it is. I only brought it up if we were making changes. I do see the relevance of talking about it, because nobody's here. At the end, you will only see it if you watch it on television or look at YouTube, but I will not die if you keep it the same or if you change it. So if we want to just keep it the same and follow the rules, I am okay with doing that.
I'll second that if it's a motion.
The, it's...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a tendency to agree with, um, Mayor Porter. I'll move it to the front. I think, I think it's important for everybody out here to hear it.
Yeah, when, when we do have good attendance at the meeting, yeah.
Mayor.
And then sometimes there's no official comments. That was just kind of like at the end of the meeting. It's not going to consume a lot of time if everybody just keeps that in mind, that your, whatever your official comment is, it's got to be something that would bring something to the meeting, not just to, to be talking. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change to rule sixteen of the rules of procedure for the town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners.
Yes, I have a, have a motion and a second. Um, any other...
Can somebody get rules in me? I don't have it.
The, the change would...
Rules out there, rule sixteen, they're taking official, that's taking official...
Just what you have, just what you have in the rules and procedure.
It's just changing the order of it.
Yeah, changing the order of the meeting. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? So it's a three to two. So the agenda, um, order of agenda will change for the August meeting. All right, next on the agenda is, um, new business, and this is consideration and possible action, partnering with NC DOT to install sidewalks during Project Youth dash thirty-four twenty-two, NC DOT Camden Road widening. This is behind, uh, tab nine, and I, uh, who is, is someone here going to speak to that? You want me to speak to Don? Don's going to take it. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this project is a DOT project that is set to widen Camden Road, and it will be from the bowtie to NC fifty-nine. Um, right now, it is just beyond, essentially beyond the concept phase. It's still very early on, but they are projecting that for October of twenty twenty-three. One of the things that they have asked, if I would bring to the board, is if they, would we be interested in partnering with them to put sidewalks on both sides of the road? Um, and if we agree to it right now, if they're looking at a ninety-ten split, and the town's portion would be ten percent, and the original, or should say, the original engineering estimate for that would be about forty-two or forty-three thousand dollars, um, for the town to pay for that. Um, one thing to keep in mind, um, the double-edged sword here is a lot of that portion of Camden Road is not into town per se right now. The qualifier to that is we know that the county does not do roads and sidewalks. So if we don't do it, it doesn't get done.
And I just want to make the comment that ten percent and getting it done is a whole lot better than having a hundred percent if we don't partner with them, because I know that sometimes they'll only put them on one side of the road. Uh, this is, by saying both sides of the road, I think that's what's the win-win here, is it'll improve the walkability in that whole area. But what's your, any other just thoughts you have on that?
I think it's a great idea. Um, the town wins. Um, one of the, the goals since I've been here, um, through all the different boards, has been to increase the pedestrian mobility capabilities of the town, with the Millstone Theaters there and the potential development in the county areas right now, where we have the dirt roads going back. I think that the town could do nothing but benefit from having the sidewalks there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm probably the only one that lives off of Camden Road, and I can tell you that that road is dangerous as it is tonight. It's just about every week now, we're to a point on that road where there are accidents. There's three or four of them weekly.
Can I make one point, and this is one that it's not what could happen, but what we did actually have had. We have had a pedestrian, a pedestrian death on Camden.
Yes, we have.
In the very recent past.
Yes, and, and I'm going to go back to how dangerous Camden is. And unless you travel Camden, as much as I do, you do not have the gravity of how dangerous that road is at different times of the day. And to put sidewalks down both sides of Camden, because it's heavily traveled, not only by vehicle, but there's a tremendous amount of people that walk up and down Camden on both sides, and they walk in the weeds, they walk in paths, uh, they're in and out of traffic.
Okay.
I just think it's, I'm not finished, Mayor.
Okay, all righty.
And I just think it is a heck of a deal to even have the opportunity to partner and have sidewalks in, because, you know, more and more, we need walkable communities. We truly, truly do.
One more point if I may please. They are not asking for a financial commitment tonight. Um, this is for future year's budget. Like I said, right now, what's in front of you is your initial engineering estimate. Price will probably go up the way things always tend to do. Um, but it's still on a ninety-ten split, and it will be for future year's budgeting purposes.
Commissioner Marley, do you have a question?
Um, come here.
Okay.
I, I, I agree. I think it's a good thing, and, and it's for future, um, future projects, future development. We've got plenty of time to budget that money for that when the time comes. So I, I'd make a, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we, um, move forward with this and, and approve, um, whatever you need approved tonight.
Partnering, approve the partner with...
The DOT lets them know that the town will partner with them.
Okay, so...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. This would be partnering with DOT for a ninety-ten split for the future sidewalks on Camden Road.
Uh, I think anytime we put a sidewalk in or stood a dirt path, or somebody walking through the weeds, we need to do that. And I appreciate the, uh, the motion and the second, and I will support that.
Okay, so have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and seeing none opposed, five oh. Thank you, sir.
I had one to think.
Sir.
Being nice to have a crosswalk there at the movie theater, so you can get from the opposite side over to the movie theater and the restaurants and stuff.
It's still in the concept phase, so I'll certainly bring the idea to them.
I mean, if you're going to have a sidewalk on both sides, I mean, something to get across.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion and possible action resolution R twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, updating the Coman County Animal Control ordinance applicable within the town of Hope Mills, and this is behind tab ten. And who is going to bring this to us? Is anybody? Okay, go ahead.
I can discuss that.
Okay.
Um, so this is a, an animal ordinance. Um, we do have a few questions, because we, um, when we adopt these substantive, um, bigger ordinances from the county, the language and the translation and codify it says some weird things. I'm always messed up, and we probably could look at having like a, some type of language or process when we, when they make a statement, we adopt it automatically. Um, but so that most significant changes here is mostly definitions, but the substantive changes are to remove the number of animals, um, in households. Um, they're removing the licensing requirement. I don't know if you've seen the publicity on that, but they haven't been able to capture revenue so they're kind of walking away from doing the licensing. Um, they did say that boosters are not permitted under this, and they know that you have recent discussions about that here. Um, but if we adopt these, they enforce them.